I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission CIP Committee regular meeting for Thursday, March 11th, 2021. Karen, are we in FOIA compliance?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, and if everyone, our committee members, make sure that they're unmuted. Mark, you're still muted. If you would do vote call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
And you had mentioned that...
Yes, Ms. McGowan is unable to attend.
Thank you. And having no minutes, we'll move on to the next item, citizen comments. Karen?
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning today's agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The public comment period closed Wednesday, March 10th at 4:30 p.m. At the conclusion of the open town hall portal, there was one citizen comment. Citizens who wished to speak at the meeting had to call in no later than noon on Wednesday, March 10th. No citizen signed up to speak at the meeting.
All right, thank you, Karen. New business. Sean, do you want to start off?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to provide just a brief summary of the meeting that the committee had a couple of weeks ago, and some of the discussion that include the key steps and the path forward, moving ahead with the CIP, the budget, and then the long view for strategic plan and a 10-year CIP program. And so what staff conveyed through some discussion with the committee last meeting was that we are in a period now where we're asking the CIP committee to make a recommendation for fiscal '22 project consideration. The committee provides a recommendation to the planning commission, who then forwards a recommendation on for consideration to include in the budget of priority projects. So that's the main purpose of our meeting today is to have discussion with the committee, evaluate projects that have been identified and others that the committee may think warrant discussion, but to prioritize them and make a recommendation that will go to the planning commission. I believe the date of that meeting would be on March 24th, and so we'll come forward here in just under two weeks to the planning commission for their review. Again, public comment would be allowed and accepted for packet material that goes out in advance of that meeting, and then the full commission can weigh in and final recommendations would move forward for consideration in the CIP. Okay, I'll take a breath, because that's kind of the main purpose and the key step that we need to accomplish with the committee today. Now, moving forward a little bit in the longer view, typically in the past, we've had a couple of meetings with the committee, and I know in recent years, we've discussed about keeping the committee engaged more frequently, and also with the intent to develop a real or true capital improvement program, and not just the one-year capital improvement plan. And so staff is committed to continue to work toward that effort. I think it's consistent with the town manager's direction to look at a three-year strategic plan that will help us in decision-making for allocation of resources, for project program, and implementation of those projects and programs in a more meaningful way to identify funding capacity and marry that up with a project list. And so we will look to have a very meaningful three-year to five-year window, and then round out the 10-year program. We'll have some more discussion after this meeting with the CIP committee later this year, and I'll cover that toward the end of this meeting. The packet material that was prepared for this meeting included some things you may have seen before. There's some new members, so we provided it again. What we've tried to do in the past is to provide you access to the originating plans for where a lot of these projects emanated from or originated from. Going forward, we'll be even more intentional in developing project sheets to give you more detail on each item. You all are volunteers, and I'd like to get to the point where we're providing you a cut sheet for each project, so you can read a page or two and get a full understanding of what they are, rather than have you drill down into the plans that we have on the book. Some of these plans are old, so we're also trying to be purposeful to pull all the old plan recommendations together, have a meaningful discussion on what should continue to move forward, but reframe our discussion on the new, our plan, the comprehensive plan. We're trying to really hone and focus in as that being the guiding document for decision-making moving forward. That coupled with a strategic plan that will also be consistent with our plan will put us in good position for all things operational and CIP for the town. So I'm just going to share my screen, because there might be some viewers that are interested. Can y'all see the screen here? It's just got a Word document that was part of your packet. Yeah, okay. So I provided a memo. There's active hyperlinks in this document that you can click on and go, you can look at all adopted plans that Hilton had, you can look at some of the initiative area plans or special area plans we've done in the past, but certainly our plan is a key link in that memo to take advantage of. And so hopefully, committee members and commission members that wanted to drill down could click on there and try to identify potential projects that they want to discuss today. But anyway, that was provided as a resource. The second part of what went out in that packet under the memo I drafted was Jennifer and her staff did a deeper dive related to each of the major CIP program categories, so pathways, roadways, existing facilities, and so on, and provided some context regarding goals, strategies, and tactics that are part of our plan that impact one way or another, support one way or another, those program categories. And so this was basically our first attempt to provide some summary and brevity in the review that the decision-makers could engage in to make a recommendation for prioritization or strategic planning as we advance. And so hopefully, you had a chance to look at that. It's a few pages long. It's a pretty comprehensive list related to those key program elements of the CIP, and we can answer questions. We've got Jennifer on the line today. We've got other staff on the line that will answer questions along the way, but wanted to make sure that you were aware that that initiative has been done. I think this is going to be important for today's discussion, but I think it's going to be more important with overall strategic plan for the town and our discussion later this year for a, to develop that full CIP program moving forward. Any questions on that before I move on?
Any members with questions? Mark?
I'm good, Ted. So this is basically the list we saw last time, or Todd, the list we saw last time, just ordered differently.
Yeah, I'm happy to handle that, Todd, if you'd like. The list that Jeff will cover here on the next item, Mark, is a similar list. It's been supplemented a little bit. We've had the benefit of appearing before the Parks and Rec Commission last week. I know, I think Frank Soul's on the call. We reached out to Island Rec Association, Coastal Discovery Museum. We included the fire chief. There's other components that go into the CIP, and so Jeff has supplemented the list that you saw a couple of weeks ago. There's a couple of different things in there. There's maybe slightly different wording, because I think what we're trying to do with the CIP, too, is rather than have these really small projects, there's really program enhancements that we're doing, and then we'll list the particular tactic or action that we want to achieve that year under that program enhancement. So it's been modified slightly. Mark and Jeff will cover that here in the next little bit. But any questions on the review of our plan for consistency related to the program elements or the links to the originating plans that I can handle at this time?
Has there been, you know, I know that our plan process was pretty extensive, and just quick look, you know, this is over 100 items on the list. Has there been, through that process, had there been some prioritization of some of these items, or that's still the process of trying to decipher? Because some of these are actually big ideas, you know, they're generalized, they really don't necessarily are specific to something.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think some of this will work its way out as the town manager works with staff and council to develop the strategic plan, which is going to look at roughly a three-year window. And again, I think that's important, because it provides priority at the council level, the leadership level for the allocation of resources needed to implement that strategic plan. So I think that's a critical component that will help us in developing priority or prioritization around what's in this one document.
And then you see in the future, Sean, where we're kind of doing it backwards to some degree, where we're, you know, we're doing this year's, or this coming year's CIP, where in the future, the upcoming CIP year will be a result of this sort of breakdown of a three-year, five-year, and a 10-year prioritization?
Yeah, correct. It should be an iterative process, and then each year, it shouldn't be like we're starting like relatively new, you know what I mean? Well, I hope you know what I mean, but it should be more logical progression against the strategic plan, and it shouldn't, you should have an idea of what's going to happen year two, three, maybe a little longer with some level of, I'll say certainty is the wrong word, but some level of insurance that that's consistent with the strategic plan and the direction of the leadership. So I think that's an important component, that it'll be easier to transition if done right in developing this longer three, five, and 10-year view, matching it with consistency of that three-year strategic plan where you understand where council's priorities are, and we can articulate that program much easier.
Okay, great, thank you. And Stephen, did you have any comments? Stephen, can you hear me?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, and again, we've got a bunch of staff on the call that can handle certain questions if Jeff wants to call on them. But I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. He's going to run through that list that you looked at last time that's been supplemented, and provide some additional detail, and then we'll work with the committee, Todd, under your leadership for discussion, and then a request to kind of work through prioritization of each of the elements. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Sean. Good morning, Chairman Theodore, Commissioners O'Neil and Alfred. We met on the 24th, and staff presented our initial list of CIP projects for the coming year. We had those categorized and prioritized as staff felt was proper, and since that time, we've further vetted the list. We've had input, Mr. Alfred, the Vice of Advisory Committee, Parks and Rec, et cetera. So we have updated the list, and what we have done, what I've shown there, is anything underlined is different or new from the initial list you saw on the 24th. And so I can bring it up on my screen here, and, well, it's not the... All right, can you see the list now?
Yeah, I can see yours. There you go, there it is.
Okay, good. And so the categories remain the same, and I'll run through the projects if you wish, Chairman.
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay, under pathways, as Sean mentioned, we have programmatic enhancements. These are things, kind of comprehensive programs island-wide that touch on many of the infrastructure pathway systems. Number one is accessibility and safety enhancements. These are things that may be, you know, signage or improved landings, et cetera, trimming vegetation for better sightlines, things like that. Crosswalk lighting, that's when we did the pilot project, as you recall, at Yon Cove last year, and we are due to go back to council to revisit this and move forward, but the projects we have listed are at the Northridge area shopping centers and Palmetto Parkway, and then one as well at Burke's Beach Road. And the third item under there is something new, crosswalk consistency enhancements. This, part of its aesthetics, but it's also functional. Many of these pathways and crosswalks were built, you know, over periods of time, and so we have different signs, different pavement marking, striping widths, styles, et cetera. So what we'd like to do is do a comprehensive program to get these all looking the same and consistent throughout the town. And if the commission would like to rearrange those or comment on those, I'll pause at this point.
Yeah, let me ask Stephen, since you weighed in with a very good list of comments the other day, Stephen, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think this list is, Jeff has revised it, is excellent, very much in support of what he has done here. A little comment on that first group, item two, crosswalk lighting and unsignalized locations. There are a number of both pedestrian and bicycle collisions that occur at those intersections, primarily from residents of the Oaks on one side of the street. It would, I think, be nice, in addition to looking at lighting, we look at overall general safety considerations at those particular locations. There may be other things that we should be thinking about in addition to lighting that I would hope we could take a look at.
And would that be incorporated, Jeff, into those item two? I mean, besides just lighting, is there kind of an assessment of sort of the crossing conditions and all that?
Yes, sir, yes, that, you know, could fall under item one there, but we also have received budget funding for safety assessment of the corridor Mr. Alfred's referring to from Beach City Road to Dillon Road, let's say. And so that's something, right now that we have funding available, we need to get that project fully scoped and get consultant on board to do that safety study.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
All right. And you can kind of just briefly, you know, unless you guys want more of a detail, you can sort of briefly go over the items, since we've reviewed them before, and probably focus more on the changes that you made.
Yes, sir. The next category is brand-new pathway segments, you know, where there is no town public infrastructure there now. The number one, and mentioned last time, we have plans, preliminary plans on the books along US 278 William Hutton Parkway from Arrow Road to Village of Westford. We would like to pursue that and complete that. Main Street has been high on the list. Shelter Cove Lane, that's a private pathway currently, but runs back to the park. Woodhaven Drive, moved that one up the list and designated it as a new separate phase of the Boggy Gut Pathway. Boggy Gut Pathway came out of the Circle to Circle Committee, in which there was a desire to connect pedestrian facilities from the Cordillo, the alley and area, up to Office Park Road near USC B. Phase one, we would say, is Woodhaven Drive, there's currently a very narrow, dilapidated pathway there, and it was put in by a private entity within DMC Rightofway several years ago. The private entity doesn't have the ability to maintain it. It's in a state of disrepair, and so the town could take that over, reconstruct proper pathway in the Woodhaven Drive, Woodhaven Lane area. The second, or the next two that are under, speaking with the Bicycle Advisory Committee, we broke those up. One very, very long pathway project from Hoover County's office up to Dillon Road. We discussed that and thought it would be wise to break these up into two projects, and the first one there, Shelter Cove Lane, at the Sheriff's Office up to Matthews Drive near Follyfield, will have some overlap with the Chaplain Linear Park, but we thought that one warranted a higher prioritization and should be a standalone project. And the ones below that remain the same as our last meeting.
All right, any questions from committee members?
Todd, I have a question, if I could jump in. It's Peter.
Yeah, Peter.
Where is the town with the acquisition of Main Street, Jeff?
That we're due back to committee and council. I know the last step in that process was the POA, was to provide all their financial records. Town staff had conducted estimates of immediate costs for repairs and maintenance, and then capital costs beyond that. So my understanding is we're going to be due back a committee meeting, Community Safety and Public Services Committee, and to assess where we're at and how to move forward on the acquisition of that right of way.
I mean, that's been on the docket for, you know, for at least 10 years, for my recollection, Jeff, give or take, and I think it's been, you know, vacillating between a number one and a number two priority for every year since then, but has not moved, because we can't get the POA to get off the dime and, you know, come to some reasonable agreement about turnover of funds for the condition of that road.
Yes, sir.
Is it still under consideration to split costs with the POA and secure their obligation with a special tasking district?
I think that's one of the options, yes, whether they share in the maintenance and initial cost to get it to a point where we can accept it. You know, of course, another option would be that they're not required to do that, and we assume all costs, but yes, you're right, we need to get back to committee and resolve that one as soon as we can.
That's one I constantly get questions on, Jeff, because of the safety issue with youngsters walking along that roadway, and obviously, we can't establish the pathway until we acquire the road right of way, and, you know, that seems to be the conundrum.
Yes, sir.
The potholes keep getting bigger on them.
Yeah, well, thank you, Todd, for allowing me to interject.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Question, Jeff, is the South Main Street already part of the town?
Yes, it is, from Wolfen Crane Circle to Hospital Center Boulevard. That is owned and maintained by the town.
Okay, and so that one was worked out admirably as a good way to transfer ownership?
Excuse me? I didn't hear the question.
Apparently, that one was able to work out the transfer of the right of way to the town?
Yes, that was, gosh, several years ago, over a decade ago. We resurfaced it last year, if you'll recall, but yeah, we do own that. There's not nearly as much foot traffic in that segment, not really a viable or desirable pathway project, but the other segment leading up to the schools is quite different.
Yeah. All right, any other questions from our committee members? All right, you want to move on?
All right, if you're good with that order of prioritization, we'll move on. Next category is roadways. As Peter just highlighted, rehabilitation of Main Street that is currently private has been high on our list for a few years now.
Number one, Peter.
Yes, and as I said, that is a right-of-way acquisition process that, yes, we are due to get back to committee and resolve that. Turn lane extensions, dirt roads, these are all the same. Dillon Road at 278. Yeah, forgive me for not highlighting this last one here, but, you know, we added one. This is the approach of Follyfield Road at US 278, right near Carrabas, and right now, it's a two-lane road facility, and the approach to 278 flares out to three lanes very abruptly. There's not enough stacking length, and so some folks who may want to turn right are often held up behind vehicles who may be going straight or turning left at the stoplight, and we believe that would help alleviate congestion to lengthen the multi-lane approach.
Does that require land acquisition, too?
Hope not. The right of way is wider on the Carrabas side than the residential side, so we believe we could widen towards Carrabas to facilitate the lane widths we need and not have to acquire any right of way.
Any questions on the roads from the committee?
Yeah, I just want to add, because the way we've numbered these, so dirt roads at number three, dirt roads is still a high priority at the council level, and as opportunities to move dirt road paving forward come about, we'll move forward with those relatively quickly. We have sort of a built-up reserve to be able to execute a bunch if the opportunity presents itself. I think with the recent LMO changes here last fall, we are more likely to be able to move some of those forward. So I just want to make sure that just because it's number three on the list, it's still a high priority at the council level. It's just we've been unable to execute the past few years because of some, for some other reasons, but we would like to move that forward, any opportunity we have.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good comment, Sean, and perhaps going forward to the planning commission, we may, you know, categorize that as a program instead of an individual project, so it's not competing with priority, so I'll make a note of that.
Thanks, Jeff. Want to move on to parks?
All right, parks, we've changed up the categorization a bit on this one as well. The first few, we're calling new parks. Number one, the Mid-Island Track, the former Planters Row Golf Course. Just to let folks know the status of what is happening right now, we have contracted with a surveying company to begin field surveying at that park. There was money budgeted for this year, and so we have surveyors out on the park that will be collecting detailed survey that will facilitate the master planning and later the design. Chaplain Linear Park, we added a subset of that project that it should include US 278 street scaping and pathway safety elements. This may be extending landscape medians, et cetera, you know, examining crosswalks, getting pathways away from the road, et cetera. So that one captures some other pathway projects and other elements. Patterson Family Park off of Marston Road and Taylor Family Park.
Question for you on three and four, is that, is, those are already under town ownership, that land?
Yes, sir, yes, that's my, we've acquired the land, but there are no, they're not developed currently, so we would have to develop the parks.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, we have Jennifer also on the call, who can provide more detail or clarification related to the parks. I guess anything on this parks list?
All right, thank you, Sean. Any questions from the committee on the new parks? All right, you want to move on?
Okay, and the next category is major park master planning. These are existing parks, both well over a decade old, but the Chaplain Park and Crossings Park, very, very large parks, going to engage in a master planning and concept reevaluation, see how we can enhance and improve those parks. Those also have surveying... Um, those also have surveying work, uh, currently being done. And the last category, existing park recreation facilities and improvements. Um, the only new change there, well, I need to add one right now, but uh, football goalposts and scoreboard, after the Parks and Rec Committee ma- meeting last, uh, few weeks ago, there was a request to establish a, a football field, goalposts and a scoreboard somewhere at one of the existing parks. Um, I think Crossings Park, the Meadow or Chaplain Park or Barker were given as options. Uh, so we have added that. And I should add at the bottom here, uh, Coastal Discovery Museum. Um, also has some C I P needs, mainly building repairs, uh, painting, uh, roofs, H VAC, et cetera. But, um, I'll add those as well.
And that falls under parks?
Uh, yes, sir.
And, um, I saw the emails regarding the, uh, football, uh, goalpost, so, so we don't have any, uh, sort of designated football field?
Not currently, um, Frank Soul's on the line, as some other folks may be able to, uh, add to the discussion, but yeah, my, my recollection back in the day, the, you know, Gator football happened out at Barker um, in the back, but, um, yeah, uh, uh, except for the, uh, school, school fields, I believe the answer is no.
So it's my understanding from the, um, Parks and Rec Commission meeting that we had last that they do practice Gator football at Barker Field. Um, but then they play their games at the high school. And last year, due to COVID, there wasn't, um, in some parents' minds, an active enough or robust enough season, so they formed their own league and are um, playing and practicing, um, like as a different group than Gator football, and that's what they were asking for a place that, if there was a place that already had, um, goalposts and scoreboards, then they could use it without being part of Gator football. It was kind of a mixed, um, discussion with the commission. It did end up being put on the list, but, uh, highly, um, stressed the appropriate location TBD note on Jeff's, um, list because there was not consensus. Um, if it should, where it should happen, and then a strong recommendation to work with Frank Soul because um, Island Rec does serve as our recreation provider and making sure that there wasn't a conflict between adding football goalposts somewhere that soccer actively practices or, you know, just but being able to better schedule that out and add that to the list of sports programs instead of just adding it somewhere and being in conflict.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Um, and if I remember right, um, you know, when the studies were done, uh, wasn't pickleball a fairly high priority? And I didn't, I don't know, does that fall into any of this?
Yes, pickleball was a, um, very high priority and the information that we put together with Loos Design and the Parks and Rec Master Plan, as well as the follow-up that we've done, indicated us a pickleball complex at one of the redeveloped or new parks. It was kind of earmarked at Chaplain Park in that renovation project and those, um, that group is still actively pursuing and very much interested in seeing pickleball come to a reality. It just wasn't identified as a standalone complex that would be incorporated into one of the existing or new parks.
And so that's just going to come out of, uh, the next planning studies?
Correct. The pro, we developed, um, with the Parks and Rec Commission and the community, some draft programs for each of the big three parks that I would call them, Mid Island Track, Chaplain Renovation and Crossings. And, and pickleball was in there. The next step when we hire, um, the consultants would be to validate those programs and really make sure that um, the deck chairs are in the right place and then start moving forward with, um, more detailed design at council's direction. So we, we will know in the near future where pickleball might land.
Do any committee members, any comments on the parks? All right, all right, Jeff, ready to move on?
Okay, the, um, next category is existing facilities. Um, we have this, uh, the arts campus up at the, in the art center next to Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is included in, in the master planning. Um, you know, there were four big projects proposed initially for that referendum, but this was one of them to look at that whole arts campus and do a master plan and concept development. And the new one that we have added under existing facilities is, um, public facilities and infrastructure beautification. Uh, what this means is highly visible areas. Uh, this could be a roundabout, a public parking lot, uh, town properties fronting a major thoroughfare, et cetera. To, uh, beautify these, enhance landscaping, um, to clean them up, divining, et cetera. But we wanted a devoted line item and the fund, uh, in the C I P, uh, to address these needs to, to, as I say, uh, enhance and beautify the infrastructure that the, the public sees most.
Is, is right now, is, has there been money set aside for that or is that yet to be determined?
Well, I mean, there's, there's, you know, right of way maintenance, uh, contracts we have, you know, litter control and, and mowing the grass and so forth. Uh, there, there has not been money set aside devoted to the beautification, so, so, yeah, it would be new in that sense, but, um, but it would be a devoted fund of, uh, money just for that.
Okay, now with that said, I'm going to go back up to the, um, the first line item. Um, that was the, uh, pathways, um, and, and Stephen can weigh in. Um, is the, is the item one part of that hundred thousand dollar annual set aside?
Um, yes, that there's, there is a pathway and a, a safety enhancement, but, but that's not part of the, the beautification that we are foreseeing, uh, under this.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I just want to go back because there was a question about some of the money that was set aside previously was used for the, the, um, the lighting crosswalk experiment that was just done. Um, so there was concerns about, um, you know, that that would eat up all the money that would be really used to set aside for safety enhancements, you know, in, in generalized areas. Todd?
Yeah, so I, I, again, without having the benefit of looking at the financials and having the discussion with Mark and Josh at the leadership level, I believe the direction is that the, the pathway safety element, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to reestablish that funding.
Okay.
Um, and that would handle, um, the items in that category. It wouldn't be diluted with these other things that we're now adding. I think crosswalk, uh, consistency and enhancements is its own sort of um, uh, project. I think we would kind of do an evaluation island wide, come up with the treatment and then begin to roll through that project. So we would need dedicated funding in order to advance that on whatever, uh, cycle program, um, lifespan that, um, that the town manager, you know, directs us to do at councils, with, with council support. The, the, the one at the end, this beautification, you know, the notion here is if you're looking at a brand new park um, that's town owned and it looks wonderful and you turn around and you see another town owned asset, are you getting the same experience or, or is it a different treatment? So there will need to be some, um, some dedication of funding that's intentional, um, to that effort to supplement our current uh, maintenance and operation, um, and, and allow us to im- implement those enhancements and beautification moving forward. So it's, it wouldn't be a draw against what's outlined with the safety, pathway safety idea.
Yeah.
Or that element. Um, but we'll, we'll know more as we put the financial pieces and the capacity part of the puzzle together with these priorities.
Yeah, no, I was just comparing it because it sounded like number two under existing facilities might be, uh, annual to be determined budget based on, you know, as they come up potentially?
I, I think there, there's likely to be a, a sort of regular allocation to allow us to execute against it. Uh, we won't know the order of magnitude quite yet, uh, what that might be, but I think it's, I think it's important that we have the flexibility and the capability to do kind of what it's, what the title intends, right, to, to make those beautification enhancements. So that's kind of, that's the kind of, the, the vision, I guess, as we, as we develop the C I P, uh, going forward.
All right, uh, committee members, was there a comment?
To go back to the, uh, item one again that you raised, uh, Todd, the concept in mind there is that there are, um, smaller projects, uh, every year that come up and thinking in particular right now, for example, the bike auto crash statistics show a couple of intersections that are regularly a matter of concern, such as uh, Matthews Follyfield 278 or Pope Avenue in Cordillo. Uh, also other type of projects is there is a stretch uh, on Lagoon Road right across, uh, in front of the Greek Restaurant across from the shopping center uh, that, that is very heavily trafficked, uh, needs to be cleaned up a little bit and straightened out. Uh, a bunch of little projects like that that come up every year is, is the thought as to what item one would be, uh, dedicated to.
Todd, this is Mark. Um, I think I asked this question in a different way the last time, but so we're working through these priorities and it's a great list that staff has put together and we've had a couple of exposures to it and things, but I'm still not understanding how we can set priorities within these subcategories without knowing, and I guess it's done at the council level or at the finance staff level, but you can't really set, you know, one set of priorities here because we've got, you know, eight or nine. And, um, without knowing the, the money assignment, you, you could have, you know, the top three priorities that are all paid for and then the rest that aren't, and if you move them, you can get more, that kind of process. Where does that happen? In finance or at the council level?
Todd, you want to answer that?
Um, yeah, so I think it happens at both. Um, I can tell you, it, so in the, in the past, what would happen is the, the committee would make a recommendation planning commission. Um, the Scott, the C I P manager would work with the finance director to, um, to match up funding capacity. And, and begin to articulate the capabilities to execute the priorities that were identified. Um, that, that ultimately was developed into a recommendation that would go on to the town manager as part of the budget development. And, um, some, sometimes it went forward pretty close to what the priorities were. Sometimes it was modified um, before inclusion in the budget, uh, which was ultimately adopted by council. And council ultimately will is responsible for, um, approving funding and the priorities they see fit, you know, move forward. So, um, I think they appreciate the benefit of having the input from the committee and and planning commission and a look at what the funding capacity is as they recommend and review or as a C I P and budget are recommended by the town manager to them, but ultimately they'll, they'll they'll approve the budget that they feel, uh, most strongly supports their, um, what they'd like to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, Mark, when I, um, um, became part of this, uh, committee, um, what we inherited the list from the prior year didn't have, um, priorities. And, right, so I think we go through this cyclical process of prioritizing and then not prioritizing and our group felt like at least it's a good first step, knowing, you know, the whole process that it would, you know, be an advantage. You know, put aside funding sources, you know, that we don't need to worry about that, that we just, you know, look at the projects, uh, specifically and um, and just try to, you know, based on public input, you know, and things that we, um, have at our hands for, uh, you know, backup information, try to prioritize, you know, this list just to get a good start.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it is a, is a great start. You know, I'm just, he, just from the world I come from, you know, if you got a million bucks to spend and you might be able to get six or seven priorities taken care of, but you got to leave one high priority off, and I'm just wondering where that process happens. It sounds like it happens in the financial prepar- preparation of the budget.
Yeah.
Um, for example, we've done, we've done this priority stuff pretty well. What's more important, the, uh, Island Rec Center or the fire hydrant expansion projects? Just as an example, you see the question I'm asking and it's just an example.
Yeah, no, no.
I need an answer. I'm just educating here.
Yeah. Stephen, any comments?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. You want to move on?
Okay, and the, the last two categories, uh, new facilities, the only thing under there this year, fire hydrant, uh, expansion. Uh, that's something that the, the fire department and, and the PSD work jointly with every year to, uh, further expand and provide better, uh, fire safety coverage. Um, like I say, it's a cost share and, and we've been doing that, uh, program for several years. The beach maintenance, uh, we're, we're rolling along with the, uh, beach consultant. Uh, we do monitoring and, and management of the beaches, uh, survey data collection, uh, that are ongoing. And we are gearing up for the next big, uh, renourishment project. Uh, I'm meeting with the beach consultant here in a few weeks. He's coming up from Florida. And, and we're going to lay out all the, the needs to go, uh, collect, uh, coring from, uh, sand borrow sites, et cetera, and, and move that project into a design and permitting phase.
And with that, um, Jeff, some of these items are calendar driven, aren't they? That, these are things that we know are coming up on a you know, five-year basis or that kind of thing?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, yeah, there's funding set aside each year and, as I say, it'll ramp up as, as we grow, uh, closer to the actual construction.
All right. Any, uh, overall questions from the committee members in terms of, uh, kind of where we are with, uh, the list and the, sort of the listings, priorities? The, um, we move on to the, um, future? Meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump back in. Uh, Todd, I appreciate it. Um, and, and just to cover Mark's point, I think, um, like for the beach renourishment project, as Todd mentioned, we know that it's coming up roughly in 2025. That's sort of the target date. And I think the work that we do going forward is going to be able to paint the picture so that we can plug in when we know we're going to have these significant projects come online. Um, we'll have more detail around the Mid Island Track. Uh, the other two major park redevelopments, uh, redevelopment in general in Mid Island area, Chaplain Linear Park, we'll be able to put those in, um, the timeframe with cost estimates to know what the draw is going to be and, and how that might limit our capabilities to do other projects. And I think from that, I know Scott would say we, we typically have the ability on an average year to do, I don't know, 10 or 12 million dollars in C I P um, projects. And so if you start with that and you know, you've got a couple of big projects and you take out 5 million and it gives an idea of the, of the capabilities, and that's what we're trying to get. We're trying to understand that long view capability and when, and when we probably should look for programming as it fits into where we have resource, resources available to execute. So I think we're going to paint that picture. Um, I use that as a segue for this, this final thing that I like to talk about. Um, so we appreciate the committee's discussion. Uh, we, we always have a pretty good, um, idea of, of projects that are important to consider for the budget. Uh, but certainly the discussion here, um, emphasis on some certain projects uh, will be what goes to planning commission and then ultimately, um, to staff and council as we articulate the budget development and then recommend one, town manager recommends a budget to council. But going forward, again, I think what we'd like to do, um, is once we get through this budget development cycle is to engage the C I P committee. Um, to, we'll roll up our sleeves, staff and the C I P committee to develop that, that full picture, right? So we can plug in anticipated projects we have coming up um, in the schedule, develop order of magnitude costs, um, and develop that program. Now that's going to involve, um, evaluating what we call Now, that's going to involve evaluating what we call the CNAP, the Capital Needs Assessment Program, a bunch of these projects that we are, that we used to say are in the bullpen. Some of the, some of the projects in the bullpen, like pitchers on a baseball team, you would never bring out, right? You're never going to, you're never going to put them, bring them in in relief. If that's the case, then I think we need to cut those from the program, but would like the recommendation from the committee and Planning Commission to help that discussion with council. I think that's where we're going with the strategic plan and direction from our plan with council is to be intentional, strategic, and, and develop a meaningful program of work going forward. So I'd like to work with the committee going forward on that component to kind of vet, streamline, and advance projects that are worth advancing and keeping them on the list for future consideration. We would then use that to articulate more than just a one-year priority list. Now, I know everything we talked about today is not going to make it in a one-year capital cycle, but what we should do is if it's number four on this list, are we going to be able to get to it this year? Is it next year? Is it three years out? And so again, be able to paint that picture, want to develop consistency with our plan, with the council strategic plan and a capital improvement program so that we all understand what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and then, and how we're working forward toward common goals in the future. But I think it's, it's an exciting time and I'd like to engage you as volunteers to do some work later this year, kind of after this budget cycle is developed. So mid-year, maybe we work the last six months of this calendar year so that by the end of the year, end of the calendar year, we have that full picture. And then when we go through this process, early 2022, we're able to kind of just slide that window and make a few minor adjustments to, to the program and recommend that as we go forward for budget development. So I know some of you are leaving the committee or commission and so it'll be a little bit of transition there. And so we may, we may pick this up right after new commissioners and committees are assigned and, and work with them on that rather than kind of lose some of you midstream. But that, that's the idea, that's what I'd like to propose for a schedule and happy to answer any questions y'all have on that effort at this time.
Committee members, any questions?
Todd, I have a question for Sean. Sean, this is a laundry list and, and, you know, many of these projects have been on this list for, as you indicated, a number of years. Is there any value in, and I know staff would be sticking their neck out, of doing a five-year plan and placing those items in priority order through that five year and assign numbers to them because obviously there are projects that are more expensive than others and you're going to need to budget your money out so you're, you're not hit in any one year. But rather than having this constant rolling list, and as you indicated, if it's not worthy, then, you know, we, we drop it off the list. And, you know, that may be a politically incorrect thing to, to do, but, you know, we, we need to provide, you know, some guidance rather than just have this long laundry list that, you know, and we just continue to carry, doing a five-year plan and, you know, assigning numbers and then bringing it back and, and let the, the Planning Commission take a stab at it, knowing that the council is going to have the final word.
So you're, we're on, we're in alignment, okay? Because that is kind of the, what we're trying to do. We had started going through the CNAP at the staff, staff level and I think under better circumstances, we would have engaged you in vetting that list. Now, it would have taken some time and that's what we're basically saying we'd like to do later this year. The, the idea is not to have a one-year capital plan, right, that we, and I call it Groundhog Day, and every year we come, here's the list, here's an update from what we did last year, here's the list that we gave you last year, it's been supplemented and here, you know, please react to this and identify priority. It's to develop a true program and I think it's critical to have at least that three-year window with, and develop cost estimates and fund, and, and match that against funding capacity so that we understand what that looks like. I think we articulated out to five and maybe in probably 10 years, but what I say is that three-year window is magnified. And then as you slide across that five and 10-year program, it magnifies, we bring project costs and schedules more into focus. Not each year, you know what I mean, but that three-year period continues to be the area where we're executing. So I think that's consistent with what I'm hearing from you, Peter.
Yep.
And so we're not, you know, it's on the same list, same category, it's just a different name that we're popping in every year. So I think that's the intent where we'll have a more meaningful program and strategic action that comes out of it.
That's the right way to do it, Sean.
And, and it would be shared, you know, it would be available so the public and other stakeholders can see and have access to where, where a project they may support, where it fits in. And I think, because I think now we get competing interest every year. So every year, anyone that has a project or initiative, they come because they feel like, if I don't compete this year, I'm not going to have a chance. And so I think if we can develop that, then, then individual stakeholders and project advocates can understand kind of where they fit in the strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to interject.
Sure thing. Hey, Sean, some other questions. Is any of this driven by the TIF district? Was there a deadline on some of that funding?
So there is, under the current TIF redevelopment strategy and timeframe, we do have to commit the remaining TIF funds by December of 2024. And, and so there is some flexibility. So the Chaplain Linear Park was the, the last of the three major projects that were included in the 10-year TIF extension from 2014 to 2024. But there are other, I would say, smaller projects that were articulated in the TIF plan to begin with that we intended to execute. And so some of those improvements through the Chaplain area will be incorporated into Chaplain Linear Park and then some will be incorporated into the Chaplain Park redevelopment. But we'd like to be able to execute some of those other components. That's why that element that Jeff mentioned for streetscape enhancement, beautification, some of those things would occur through the Chaplain area and allow us to, to move forward using TIF funds to execute.
But that's just another example of what's driving sort of a priority.
Yes, and I think even the last year or two, we've, we've recommended that Chaplain be a project of, of priority just because we need to develop, design, and implement that to expand, to commit the funds by 2024. And it sounds like a lot of time, but it'll be here quickly, it'll be here pretty quickly.
And then, in the past, you, you kind of reminded me, when we were looking at priorities for the year, there was also a spreadsheet that was shared that, that looked at expenditures of what has already been, you know, funded for like beach renourishment and how those dollars are carried out. I can't remember if it was a five-year window or, or, you know, further, but I remember that was just part of shared information, you know, so that we could see, you know, what was already kind of in the works and had been, you know, already funded. That seemed to be helpful, you know, just through that process.
Yeah, that'll be part of the discussion with the committee later for the next bit of work and be part of the entire discussion and what we represent to the public as well going forward. We'll have the one-year and then up to 10-year view of the, of the program.
And going back to item B, do we need to make a motion to advance this to Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. If, if there's any modification to the priorities, it doesn't sound like there was, other than making sure that Main Street remains a, a priority and it is on the list, but a recommendation to the Planning Commission that this be the priority recommendations for council for budget consideration and CIP.
All right.
I wanted to, to note before we go ahead, as indicated in, in my email, I cannot participate in the discussion or the voting on matters relating to the Arts Center because I am an officer and trustee of that organization.
Thank you, Stephen. Now, with that said, you can still vote and make a motion on advancing this to Planning Commission, right?
That would, that would include the Arts Center, I think, so I would have some questions about that.
Todd or Jeff, is that?
I don't think there's any fina-, well, I'm not a lawyer, okay, first of all, but I don't think there's any financial benefit of, of recommending a list of priorities to the Planning Commission at this time. You, you don't have fiduciary responsibility that, that occurs at council. Council ultimately make a decision on what they believe is priority and include for funding. But if, if Mr. Alfred wants to make that note as part of his vote, that he supports it, with the exception of that item, which he would prefer to withstand from, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do. Thanks, Ron.
Will the committee member make a motion?
I would move approval of our priorities list to the Planning Commission with Mr. Alfred's noted exception.
The second?
You.
I guess I'll vote for a sec. Any discussion? All in favor? Stephen, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of all the items on the list, but abstain from the matter relating to the Arts Center.
All right. Does that make us ready to move it on, Sean?
Yeah, we'll make sure that that's noted in the minutes and reflected in the recommendation that goes to Planning Commission.
In, in terms of C on the schedule, and obviously, you know, I'm going to roll off of the committee and Planning Commission, so are you going to reach back out after that date to start scheduling? Are you going to try to start some of that beforehand of getting on people calendars?
So my, my plan, Mr. Chairman, is to begin to develop the process and tentative schedule in order to, to do the work we've, we've talked about.
Yeah.
I, I, up until June 30th, I may reach out to you as chairman of the committee to get your thoughts and, and input and then, but likely to not engage the work till after July 1 and the committees are established. I, I, I don't want to have disruption in the middle if we've got some, a bunch of turnover.
All right, is there, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some heard.
Thank you, second, Mr. Neil.
Second, yes.
I vote as well. So we're officially adjourned.
Thanks, everybody, for your time today.
Input and support.
Good presentation, Jeff and Sean, very good.
Thank you.